Item is minutes from February 16th, 2022. Does anybody have any corrections, deletions, additions?
Nope.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Jay made the motion, Scott Fitzgerald approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, next quarter of business is 11 Dana Drive. Are you folks 11 Dana Drive? Right up to the microphone. Okay. Jenny and Pierre Sue?
Close enough, yep.
Okay. Tell us what you want to do. Before you do that, can I have a motion to go for the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now tell us what you want to do.
Okay. So, my mother moved in with us and our two kids about two and a half years now. And we wanted to convert our current garage into in-law space and then build a two-car garage on the other side of that. So. We need to move.
Okay. So, we are... We're looking for a special permit to create an ADU.
Just converting the existing garage. She can't go up the stairs.
But by adding the other garage you're not infringing on any of the setbacks. That's the other thing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, pardon?
That's correct.
Okay.
The proposed issue needs sound requirement. That's not required.
I don't have any real questions. It all looks pretty straightforward. You're aware of the parameters as far as signing an affidavit saying that you'll live in the residence?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The board have any questions?
Pretty straightforward, isn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to see that you're keeping it on the first floor.
Yes.
We get some petitions come in here and they put momma upstairs, you know, and you've got to put in a stair lift and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think this is a nice alternative to that. And it's in fitting with the neighborhood. It's going to affect the character of the neighborhood. And architecturally, it looks great. There we go. And you've got a pretty big lot there, so I think it shouldn't be an issue. And did Board of Health weigh in on this, Joe? So the septic is fine?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think I saw something with septic.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition to this request? I'm seeing none on either side. The board is all set. Okay. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Made the motion. Scott, seconded it.
Dan seconded.
Dan seconded it, sorry.
I beat Scott this time.
Jay?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative. So, can we have a motion for a special permit pursuant to section... Nope, wrong section. Section 3.3.2, Town of Westford decree an accessory dwelling unit, be it a conversion of a garage, at 11 Dana Drive.
So moved.
Jay made the motion. Scott seconded the motion. Jay?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in affirmative. And for the meditakers' notes, Dan Britko is sitting in tonight as a member of the board. Okay, so, you're all set. We approved the plan that you submitted to us, so that's what needs to be built. Staff has 14 days to write a decision. There's a 20-day appeal period, so after the 14 and the 20, start digging.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Moving on, as I mentioned earlier, 164 Main Street is going to be continued, asked by the applicant to be continued to April 20th. Can I have a motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
Jay made the motion. Scott Fitzgerald seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes care of that one.
That one has been delayed?
It's being delayed until next month, yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't get the notice.
It just happened today.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So...
Okay, so we'll come back, right?
April 20th, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, so the next item is 25 Kersey Circle. Okay, can I have a motion to go for the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we have the kids.
Yes.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Sure. So, we are looking to build a ADU on our house. It's basically an in-law suite to house my parents. I have one in early 80s, one in the late 70s. My in-laws are about 15, 16 years younger than my parents, so when they're done with the unit, we will have our in-laws move in afterwards. So, we're looking to build, it's about 800 square foot in-law apartment with a one-car garage.
Mm-hmm. Before we get started, I would just like to make one slight correction from Captain Don Pick. Apparently, his telephone likes to do auto-correct for him, so he sent information back on 25 Curtis Circle. It's not, it's Kersey Circle. So, just so the record reflects that. So, it appears you're going to have to put in a new septic system?
Yes.
Yep, and that's been approved.
And the spot where it's going, is that the only spot where it can go?
We did extensive testing on the site, and there's a fair amount of ledge all around the site, so the only suitable spot is the location where the existing septic tank is. We have the original septic tank for our house, so it's grandfathered in. So, the proposed is slightly bigger than the one that we have now because we have a grandfathered, smaller.
I mean, a bigger tank. But it be in that same location?
It's the same location.
Same general area?
They're going to fill the old tank in, put a new tank in, D-Box and septic system.
Yep.
The plan is you're asking to build a ADU that's kind of configured with a sunroom and everything else. So, in my opinion, it looks much bigger of a project than really is involved with an ADU, which is not a problem with that, but I just, you know, at first glance, when you look at it, you say, wow, that's a huge ADU. And essentially, the ADU almost meets, or is just a little under the requirement sizes. It's all the other jazz that is making it a big project. Now, I'm on the understanding that the garage does not count as ADU space, and the joint sunroom, how do you, I don't know how you divide that up, half to one, half to the other? I mean, it's common space is basically what it is.
Right.
Right, that was the, the idea was to be able to connect the two houses together, two dwellings together.
Without having to walk outside. We didn't want them to be an outside connection between the two.
Yep.
It's all on one floor.
Okay. The board have any questions or concerns?
You know, the, it has the existing principal area, 400 square feet, and a new principal area, what's that? You know, on that...
The colorful, is it the colorful one? Yep.
Yeah.
I was a little confused of that one.
It does make it tough.
Right, the new principal living area is a combination of that sun, that combined sunroom, and then we have an alcove, like most Hicks houses do, coming to the front of your house, so we're bumping that alcove out to enclose it. And then there was a second floor right above the ADU that was going to be principal living space. It's a space off of the master bedroom.
And that, that second floor piece is probably not going to get done now, just given the cost of lumber and materials and everything, so.
So, you're not going to have that new principal living area, then?
The second floor one, yeah.
Okay. So, essentially, the ADU is the 786 whatever, and then the new garage is 438.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the other bit is that little alcove, I'd buy a fill-in.
So, Joe, how does that affect this set of plans, then?
Well, if the second floor area isn't going to be constructed, then we will need some updated revised plans. For the... See, not having a second floor, additional...
The reason I'm asking this question is when we approve a plan, that's what gets built.
Right.
So, there's no changes unless it's something minor. So, that's why I'm questioning approving this plan if you're not going to build some of it.
Well, I think for us, as the time has gone on, the problem is with each week, the cost of these supplies are going higher and higher. So, we're just being forced to revise our budget with each passing period of time. And we're having just a hard time, like, getting people to commit to a budget because they can't.
Right.
So, of all of this, if there's something that's coming off the table, it's obviously that second floor, because that's, what we need is the ADU, you know?
So, these existing plans here don't have that new principal area on there?
Yes.
They do. They do, this one.
Yes.
Okay.
So, Joe, would they have to redo the plan, or would we just say, second floor plan is voided?
You could make that a condition of approval if that was something the board wants to implement, is if you were finding that you wanted to approve it, that it would be constructed, so the second floor and revised plans have to be submitted to our office, same private and building. So...
So, just from a process perspective, so let's say we move forward with the plans as-is, we talk to the builder, we find out it's too expensive, we decide at that point to remove the second floor, what would the process be? Would we have to come back and front, or can we just build something smaller? Do we have to come back?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, in principle, I don't have a problem with an ADU, okay, especially for what the reason you're going to use it for. But, as I said, you know, we have to approve a set of plans, and it's pretty definitive. So, I mean, do you want to hold and think about it, or do you want us to approve this, or make it subject to the new plans, or, I mean, there's a lot of ifs here for us.
I think for us, you know, to get it approved with subject removing the second floor, I think we would go forward with that.
Yeah.
Condition, if that's the right word.
Yeah, the order, and the order of conditions that you're going to receive, I would say. So, then you would have to, you know, draw up another set of plans, submit that to staff, and then that's what goes in the final record.
That's fine.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition to this petition? Come up to the microphone and give us your name. It doesn't have to be for or against, we'll take comments. That's just the way we word it.
All in the box.
Sorry.
I'm 18, St. Leon, 27 Kersey Circle.
That's, you guys, your name?
Yeah.
Okay. We live next door to the McCunes, and as we fully support their plan to take care of their elderly parents, and we would, we would support the special permit and the variance if we can have our concerns addressed. So, I had sent, we had sent a letter to the board outlining some concerns and questions, and we saw the responses from the McCunes. And I feel that they're very broad, they don't really answer the specific questions we had, but I guess for the sake of moving along, the main two issues we have are drainage, one, we're 20 feet lower, like, we're at the bottom of the hill, the side of our house faces the back of theirs, so we run along the lot line. So, we'll be 20 feet lower, and there will be trees removed for the septic, the ADU, and any dead and diseased trees according to what we've seen. So, we've had water in the basement in the past, and we're concerned that we'll have water again, so we'd like some kind of professional, we're not engineers, so we'd like some kind of assurance that the likelihood of our basement flooding is not going to be increased with the construction and the tree removal. So, that's the main issue we have with drainage, and the other is the visibility with the trees being removed. It's like opening up our view, we can, enclosed pictures of how we already see the back of the house, so we would like to have a landscape buffer included in the plan. Excuse me, my voice. We'd like to have a landscape buffer included in the plan so that we can be assured that our privacy is maintained.
Okay.
So, that's my, our main concerns.
All right, thank you. So, the landscape buffer is not a serious problem in our minds because you can plant trees and different things and do that. The drainage issue is more of a point that, how do you, how do you address that, Joe? I mean, I don't, I know if you're blasting, you do a pre-blast survey. Do you do a pre-water survey, or how do you?
I mean, usually, you don't see a four, an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, you could have drainage calculations if you really wanted from an engineer, but you can do the plot plan at this point, the engineering firm, you can use Allen Engineering. So, you could look at some pre-imposed drainage calculations if you really wanted. Usually, you don't see it at this level of project, but you could do that. That could be a condition.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. I mean, that's a pretty big slope existing already, correct?
Yeah.
Now, do you get water on a regular basis, or just infrequently?
No, we did in the past, after heavy rain, but we put a patio down. Sorry, should I go up there again?
Yeah.
We did in the past, a number of years ago, but we put a patio down, and that's, we haven't had it since. But there is a lot of ledge in the back of our yard and in the back of their yard.
Would you foresee Captain's doing blasting?
We're hoping not. Until you dig, you don't know, but, you know, it didn't seem that way from the...
Test holes.
Yeah.
Of course, you didn't do any test holes near the foundation, and they were all up in the middle of the yard, right?
Right, they're all towards the bottom of the slope.
Right.
That's where, that's where they did the majority of the testing.
Because we were looking at that back corner for the septic, but there's, there's ledge and the new requirements wouldn't allow it to fit in there. That's why we sort of went back to where the original septic is.
So, for the ADU, you're going to be clearing trees where the new septic system's going?
So, there's two sort of spots in the property, so the ADU's up, you know, obviously next to the house.
Behind the garage, yep.
The bottom of the hill, that's where the septic is?
Right.
So, you know, it's somewhat clear now, but, you know, there's going to be a few trees that need to come down because it's a, it's a bigger system?
It's a bigger system, and there's just trees that have grown in over the course of time that that original system was put in.
So, I guess my question from your concern about the privacy, on the back of your house, existing house, how many trees are you going to clear between the back of your house now and the property, in that mindset? Not over where the septic's going, but behind the garage. Seems like it'll be minimal removals back there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just anything that's within, you know, that ADU.
Do you currently have a good screening on the slope part of their yard?
There's really not. Over the years, I think previous people had septic issues where they had dug a channel down from the house to the septic area.
Okay.
And then trees came down after that. I guess they're 50-year-old trees, they're tall, so they came down. And I think you guys have some dead and diseased trees as well, so that's what we're concerned. So, our lot, our house, if you look at the plan, is right up to the lot line, and because of the 20-foot difference in elevation, even if we plant them on the lot line, like, right on the lot line, we'll still see the house. We'll still see the extension. We do today even with the tall trees.
I guess that's kind of what I was going to kind of get at, is what's going to change if they cut down a couple trees on the back of their house?
Well, if it was one or two, that's, that's different, but when we read the plan, it's the septic, the leaching field, the septic area, the ADU, and any diseased or dead trees. So, I just know when a tree guy comes in to us to take a branch down, he's always trying to convince me that the other trees are dead and they need to come down and that, so that's our concern. Our plan for along the retaining wall that's going to go, that's going to be along our side yard and our drive, parallel to our driveway, so we can sow trees on that area. We have room to, to shield from that.
Yep.
But it's just the whole ADU and extension to the house and the garage that I feel like will open it all up.
So, is the retaining wall on your property or your property?
Retaining wall will be on theirs once the septic is...
And the septic system's at the bottom of the hill down on the level of her house?
Right. Where it is today.
It's getting close.
The leaching field is more so, but the septic is up a little.
Do you have the, the letter that they sent in that had pictures?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have pictures here.
Done, okay.
Pictures that we had sent in with our packet have the pictures from the top of the hill as well.
That's from the street.
So, have they marked the leach field at all yet?
No. We have a pretty good idea of where it is because it's where our existing leach field is, but we don't have a definitive mark on each tree.
And the size of the leaching field was here. It looks like the retaining wall is 62.5, but I couldn't see the size of the leaching field.
I couldn't find the dimensions on there. It looked like it was a little bigger.
We figured it would be around 60, that the retaining wall had to be a bit bigger, but I didn't know the depth into it to see, so we were trying to get a visual for the trees that are coming down.
Find the size on there.
It says retaining wall here. Yeah, it looks like it's about 80 feet long.
A wall of the field, Dan?
They're Presby's, so that would be the pipe.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Width, width is only like 14 feet, just they're 80 feet long.
It's going to be narrow.
Yeah. Yeah. It would probably be like 12 inches in diameter.
You can see that on that picture, it has the very thin lines of where the existing leaching field is. There's a thin lined, like rectangle, there you go. Yep, that's the existing leaching field with the existing tank to the left of it. And then the new system is right there.
So, they're going to dig the old system out and put it with the new, with the new one going there?
25%? 30%?
Yeah. It's 15 feet and 12 feet. So, at 12 feet in from your lot line?
I think it's five, is it? I thought it was five. The retaining wall is five.
The retaining wall is five feet. The leaching field is 12.
12 feet in. So, are you going to cut on the other side of the leach field to the retaining wall? All the trees out of there, too?
There aren't many.
Yeah, I was going to say, there might be one or two, and one, I'm pretty sure is dead.
One of the issues at the bottom of that hill, and I think it might be because it's around the leaching field, is a lot of those trees are, have fallen or are dead. We have a couple that are leaning against other trees in that general area.
Yeah. And then as far as, you know, sort of where the ADU is, you know, the idea is, you know, we're not necessarily going to clear-cut the, the back, you know, left-hand side of it as, as you look at it. Same thing, we want our privacy, you want your privacy. So, you know, for us, it's just looking at, you know, what are those, you know, trees around the ADU? We're not going to go all the way down to the bottom of the hill to that back corner that, you know, that's all wooded. We're not going down to that bottom left-hand corner, it's just really up near the ADU.
Trees that need to take down. That's why I was asking, because, I mean, the septic system, you have to cut what you have to cut.
Right, really, that's what I'm saying, it's almost two different areas.
Keep the screen as much as possible behind the house.
Right.
So that it's not changed. I think that would help, and then...
Well, that's just the corner, so it goes all the way over, so we see all of the back of it, so it will be much more open with the, the trees gone for the leaching and septic area. And I am concerned that, you know, there are 50-year-old trees in there that will find a lot of dead and diseased ones when they're in there, or they'll start coming down because the ground is disturbed. And because it's the hill, we can't sow trees that'll shade it or cover it, you know, being at the bottom of the hill, we're at a little disadvantage. And the way our house is right and pushed into the corner of our lot, almost.
The unfortunate thing is, even if they work out and go through this process, you could go in and cut all those trees right now.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that, but this is, this is not, I mean, it's, you know, it is a variance in especially...
Well, I guess the septic system is the septic system, so I don't think there's a whole lot of things we can do there.
And we actually can sow trees, that's flat, and we have enough yard the other side to sow some hedge or whatever.
You know, as far as putting a, a hedge on the upper hill, I think they could probably stagger some trees that would help screen from both parties.
How much site work is involved in grading around that, the whole addition? Get a 10-foot drop.
260 to...
250.
Yeah.
What's your plans for that?
So in talking with the contractor, the, the idea is to have a full basement under it, that's a walkout with the level of the land, because our current house is a walkout. So the thought is, it would just be built into the land similar to the back of our house.
Is that view of addition? You want to show us, just like...
Yeah, so we have a high wall, high foundation wall.
Just in the back of our house.
About the height of the deck, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the way that the addition runs is it, it runs kind of right up to where that deck is right now.
Mm-hmm.
So that way, the foundation underneath that ADU is actually right where our full windows are in our basement. So from a, I guess from a land perspective, it should flow nicely in with the way the, it's kind of graded right now.
So most of those trees will stay there, then I take, or is that...
So, so again, so where you see those two split trees?
Yep.
That's actually our lot.
Yeah, that's on their lot, but if you sort of go directly behind that, that's where the, the septic is going to go. So there'll be trees that come down in that general area. And then, you know, sort of up the hill, all those trees, there's a lot of small pine trees that'll stay.
Right.
You know, some of the bigger trees may come down, and again, those might be some of the dead ones as well, but, you know, I don't know if that five trees, six trees, I don't know.
How wide is the deck that's there that now?
12. 12 by 12 maybe?
Yeah, 12 by 12. Takes a while to shovel it.
And so the, the width of this ADU varies from 18 feet to...
20?
25 feet, right? The garage is 25?
Yeah.
So you're not going to have any back yet?
We don't now.
We don't have one now.
Big about, about 10 feet of grass, and then it's, it's woods.
Yeah.
It's what's nice about living at the back of the cul-de-sac, or the horseshoe.
Primarily use our front yard.
The deck listed on here is all existing deck, which appears to be maybe 22 feet deep before here, and then 18 here.
That's the new one though, right?
Yeah, that's the new one, yeah.
The oldest, first one.
The existing one is where the sunroom is right now.
But not as deep.
It's not as deep, no. No, it's probably about that, maybe half that size.
The proposed sunroom's not for the ADU, right? That's for the...
No, it's, it's really for us to use. I mean, you know, for the back of our house, we don't enjoy it as a yard, but we will go sit out there. So that sunroom is going to kind of take the place of, of the deck, and, you know, that's how we're going to kind of enjoy the back of our property.
But it is open to the ADU, I, you thought you guys were going to share, right?
Yeah, so there's a sliding blast, yeah.
I don't know what you can do about runoff, you know, from the septic.
It's what the walls for.
Yeah, get graded, so it won't run that, that... Right, but you don't know if you're going to affect anything, I just started thinking, but as far as the impervious, uh, the new, of the roofs, I mean, you put in cul-decks with stone and capture all that water and keep it up on top of the hill. So it just doesn't run down.
That's what we do right now on our existing house, is we have, we have gutters and we have a stone kind of area around the foundation to catch water and try to channel it.
I would like to see, have an engineer design it, because they'll tell you how much rain, runoff that can be created by the roof line, how big the, the stormwater retention area has to be, I mean, they'll say, you know, use this size stone, certain type, type of size of filter fabric, stuff like that, just to capture all that. You're familiar with that stuff, Joe, right? Yeah.
And are you adding another driveway?
So the, the existing driveway, you know, sort of goes straight into our current garage.
Yep.
It'll have a little, you know, carve out to get into the new one-car garage.
Okay.
We thought about putting in a brand-new driveway, but our street was just paved and new sidewalks and curbs were put in, so...
We didn't want to cut into all that pinion work that was done.
And then have to replace what we take out.
Thank you.
Trust me.
Sidewalk, I gotta replace it.
Yeah, I was going to say, they already have their own story in the sidewalks.
I think we've, we've put in that sidewalk two or three times so far in Kersey Circle, so we're going to leave it alone.
It'd be great lawn though, when they took it out. And so grass seed, it was the best grass that grew there.
Okay, well, I think we've got some, some alternatives here, I mean, some to, to look at as far as, you know, some kind of a screening on the upper side of the hill, plantings, and then the other thing that we talked about, blasting is blasting, it has nothing to do with us, that's the fire department.
Yep.
And the, I like the idea of engineering the water runoff, just to make sure that we're not contributing to more runoff. Your Allen Engineering can do that for you, based on the impervious surface that you're going to have versus what you do have. Like Dan said, he'll come up with a little area for you to pump that water into, so you're not infringing on your neighbors. Anything else?
Nope, that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
I guess my question is on the plantings, is that in our purview, or is that like a neighborly agreement between the two parties?
Very well, could be, there could be a condition of approval, having a landscape plan agreed and approved by the board, say prior occupancy, current being issued. But now you want staff to review and approve that on your behalf, or whether you want to see it? It's totally your call.
Mm-hmm.
And if you wanted to have any kind of conditions such as like it's a one-to-one replacement of properties where the town factories are planted, or two-to-one, or whatever, it's still in here. Usually we look for trees to be a certain caliber as well, but I think that...
I don't know, I mean, they're both concerned about the screen, I mean, I'd like to see two neighbors just sit down and talk and hash it out themselves.
We, we don't have to condition it, if you two can say, okay, let's put some trees here, and you say we'd like to put some trees there and reach an agreement.
I think the thing that I'm concerned about, and, you know, that's a, that's a slope, so to get a tree that's going to, that's going to cover that, you know...
Like, I think we used the word tree, but it could be shrubbery, like...
But even still, like, how tall a shrub do you need to plant?
You've got to remember, you're 20 feet below.
That's going to shield something from people who are 20 feet below you. I just want to make sure that, I don't want to commit to something.
They're going to be shielded because they're looking up. It's you that's not going to, you know, you'd have to have a 20-foot apple.
You're going to be looking over what you're going to do, and look into what you plant, is basically what it comes down to.
Because everything's going to mature, but it's going to take time. Right.
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a very wooded lot, so I, I'm not even sure how much of it will be seen other than in the winter.
They seem willing to plant on their end as well to help screen, so, I don't know, I just have a hard time saying you've got to spend X amount of dollars or X amount of plants to screen when you guys can just get together and be like, all right, I'll do three up here, I'll do three down here, and, or whatever the number may be, you know what I mean? That way you get it from both perspectives and it's all cleared.
Well, I'd like to have it in the plan, just so that we're all, I mean, we're happy to contribute, even contribute to the cost of it somewhat, but I'd like to have, I'd like to have this outlined, so you know, we're not going back and forth later on if we have something addressing it in the plan now. You know, if we know what we're doing for drainage in that now in the plan, then, I mean, I think it just saves any confusion or back and forth later on.
I mean, for the, for the drainage, I mean, that, that's another cost for us to incur as well, where, you know, there is no proof of water today. I mean, you could just have a high water table, it may have nothing to do with the hill in our backyard.
Right, but also, it's very common today with the new roof line, it's now not going into the ground, it's hitting a roof and running.
You pay your stormwater tax, right?
So it's 100 feet from the proposed lot, beginning of the...
I get it, but you're still adding impervious surfaces that aren't going to take the water.
Yeah.
I don't want to make you guys incur more expenses on either way, but...
Every new house that gets built in town these days has to adhere to that, so this is a sizable project too, so... Joe?
And these are not big, the retention, the cul-deck retention systems, they're not big. It's in the ground, it gets buried over, you'll never see it, but it's got, it's adequate size, adequate stone to handle the increased runoff.
Just going to say something for the board's consideration, we have the second floor area that would have to be taken off the plans for revision. The drainage looked at, it's a concern of the board. The landscape thing also has been brought up a few times tonight, something that, that could be a possibility, you could always, well, to continue the matter to the next meeting with staff, if you feel comfortable, could draft a decision for your review, and in the meantime, the applicant could work on providing updated materials for your review as well for the next meeting.
So did you understand all that? Okay. So I think we're, we're close, but I think we're going to be a little more definitive as far as the plan, runoff, a general idea on maybe some screening. Those are the things that, if you, we can continue to the next meeting.
Mike can prob, Mike Sillian can probably help you with all that.
Yeah, Mike can do it all. Yeah, you're going to have to change the plans anyway, right? So he could probably, you know, add additional stuff, right, right. That's if you decide you're going to take the second floor off.
Yeah, I'm 99% sure we already have a version without that second floor.
Okay, so that...
That's not a big, that's...
That would be helpful to us if we can see the real deal, and we can make a, make a motion on it, and like these guys said, if you get everything incorporated on that one plan, then it makes it easy for us. Do you have any questions before you go?
I think we're good.
And if you forget some of this, all Joe.
We'll be talking to Joe.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue this till April 20th?
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor? Okay.
Awesome.
See you next month. All right, did we have any new business, old business?
Not for any of this.
Joe, anything for you? Okay, may we have a motion to close?
Motion to close the meeting.
Second. All those in favor? All right, good job, Joe. Appreciate the input.